Good evening. Welcome to the Monday Voting Board Meeting, June 18th, 2012. If we could have the roll call, please.
Mayor Ron is absent tonight. Mayor Pro Tim Fleming.
Here.
Clerks here. Trustee Emery.
Here.
Trustee Klebeneau.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Trustee Seneca is absent. Manager Searle.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Fire Chief Weiss.
Here.
Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Human Resource Director Casey.
Here.
Community Development Director Malik.
Here.
And Code Enforcement Officer Sinisak.
Here.
Please stand to join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up, we have Village Board Minutes. Consider approving the minutes of the Committee of the Whole Meeting, held May 31st, 2012, and a Village Board Meeting of June 4th, 2012. Your motion?
Motion approved, Scott. Second, Nero.
Any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Klebeneau.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to the reports. Under the mayor this evening, we have with us this evening, the Westmont Auto Mile Veteran Cruise Winner. If, Larry, if you'd please come forward and give the presentation, and then I will be more than happy to read it, and then we will present it.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Board Members. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. My name's Larry Forsberg. I'm representing the Westmont Auto Mile this evening. The Westmont Auto Mile is very proud to be presenting this second annual Cruising the Summer Award. The Westmont Auto Mile is comprised of infinity of Clarendon Hills, Laurel Audi, Laurel BMW. We have McGrath Lexus, McGrath, McGrath Acura, excuse me, and Laurel BMW, including also with us today, Oak Brook Scion and Oak Brook Toyota. For those who aren't aware of the Westmont Auto Mile, it's really a world-class cluster of car dealers right here along Ogden Avenue, and they offer some of the best selection and quality in the entire Chicago area, so they are also very huge supporters of our community and our special events. So, this Cruising the Summer Award is another thing that we do to help support our community and our veterans. On June 4th, at the board meeting here, Mayor Ron picked the winner of the Cruising the Summer Drawing, and Mr. Sean Kennedy's name was drawn that evening, and he's with us tonight to receive that presentation. But before we present it to him, I'd like to share a little bit of information about Mr. Kennedy. He was, went into the Marine Corps Boot Camp on May, in May of 2008. He was assigned to the job of a generator mechanic. After his schooling, he was sent to Combat Logistics with Battalion Six. He was deployed with the battalion to Afghanistan in January of 2010 for seven months. Mr. Kennedy was also deployed again in 2011 for seven additional months. During his second deployment, he was awarded the United States Navy Marine Corps Achievement Medal for the amount of work that he accomplished and the quality of his work. He was promoted to the rank of Corporal on March 1st, 2012, and was released from active duty on May 19th, 2012, so he just arrived back home a short time ago. In talking to him, it was, you know, this prize was just perfect because he was married shortly before he went in and was never allowed to take a honeymoon, so this Caribbean cruise will be just a great addition. So, at this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Sean Kennedy and some representatives from the Westmont Auto Mile. Come on up. And, Mr. Mayor.
Well, on behalf of the Westmont Auto Mile, congratulations to Mr. Sean Kennedy for winning the Westmont Auto Miles 2012 Cruising the Summer Drawing for Caribbean Cruises. As winner, you and your wife will receive three-night Caribbean cruise and a hundred trip fare from Chicago. On behalf of the Westmont Auto Mile, thank you for your service and protection of our freedom, and we also thank you from the Village, and congratulations. Thank you.
Is there anything you would like to say? I'll give you the podium. I'd like to say thank you to the Westmont Auto Mile for giving us this, because this is perfect. We didn't get the honeymoon that we wanted, because I had to deploy, and this absolutely takes the cake. This is awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
We thank him for his service, and we thank the Westmont Auto Mile for being such a huge supporter of our community events and of our veterans, and thank you for your time this evening.
At this time, we have a representative from the Downers Grove Township Senior Citizens Program presentation. Be so kind, sir.
Good evening. My name's Ralph Beardsley, and I'm here on behalf of the Downers Grove Township Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. With me here tonight are Bill Swanston, a long, long-time Downers Grove Township trustee and a resident of Westmont, and also Frank Worster, who is the township supervisor. Okay? And I've been with this body, I guess getting on to about a year and a half now. I was appointed in 2011 to it. The township, of course, includes eight communities in all, including, you know, you folks here in Westmont, along with some unincorporated areas, too. The Senior Citizens Advisory Committee was established back in 1983, and it involves nine of us as volunteers who serve on it. We are appointed by the township board, you know, the four trustees that actually sit on that and are elected representatives to it. There's a lot of members who've been on for a long, long time. Myself, I came, as I said, at the beginning in 2011, along with a couple of other people when they brought in, you know, three new folks to join the remaining six people. And we're from, you know, throughout the township. I happen to live in Darien, right next door here. And our focus is to propose programs to promote self-sufficiency and well-being of the older residents here in the township. Another way that our senior services coordinator, who's Hannah Benioff, who couldn't be here with us tonight, but is really the driving force behind this and has been with the township a long, long time, is the senior services coordinator. The way Hannah will put it is she says, you know, "We're meant to be the eyes and ears of the township, looking out, you know, really for elderly people and for their needs and so forth, and trying to arrive at ways that, you know, the township and other bodies, too, can help meet those needs." In your handout, you have both the outline here, and there's also a separate one-page thing there with several phone numbers and so forth, and locations, and that type of thing on it as well, just to follow what we're going to be covering here. And we're just going to really update you on particularly what, you know, we've been doing of late as an advisory committee. The township offices, of course, are at 4340 Prince Street in Downers Grove, right by Downers North High School. The general phone number there is 630-719-6610, and then 6682 specifically is senior services, where a lot of times Hannah will answer the phone for you personally. And the website is in, within www.dgtownship.com. And the township services that we're involved with, providing for seniors, is sort of a two-pronged approach that we're involved with. There's several things that we're actively doing ourselves and/or in conjunction, say, with somebody like PACE. And then there's a number of other programs that we link up to and can kind of refer people into, normally more at the level of, say, DuPage County, so we're not involved with those directly, but in a lot of cases, we do, you know, and put forward people to those as well. In terms of the immediate things that we're doing ourselves, that we're actively involved with, number one would be the Dial-A-Ride program, which we do in conjunction with PACE, and that's transportation for people 65 and up, along with also disabled people can take advantage of it. In 2011, there was almost 4,000 trips taken on those buses, and it will take you, of course, anywhere around the township for a $5 fee, you know, each way. Okay, it's pretty economical. And those 4,000 trips involved over 600 people who chose to utilize the service. Two-thirds of them were elderly, and one-third happened to be disabled. It's interesting, the number-one use that people avail the program for, 36% of people used it to go to work, which I think is really, you know, kind of a neat finding, that people still at 65 and above were using it, over a third of them to go to their jobs. Secondly, was medical appointments at 28%, and third was social activities at 17%. So, if you look at those three things, that's about 80% of the total use of the Dial-A-Ride program. And the numbers have been holding, you know, pretty steady year to year to year. Usually, it's about, you know, 4,000 trips or so, and about 600 people who utilize that service. RTA fare permits are another transportation program that we're involved with. Again, that's for people 65 and up, as well as for disabled folks, and that provides both discount and/or free rides on the RTA. 350 people in 2011 avail themselves of that program, registering for it and using it. The Vintage Times is another thing we're involved with. That's a cable TV program. Hannah hosts that every month. It's on, it's on Channel 19 in the Comcast world. I'm not sure what the channel would, you know, would be here within Westmont, but they broadcast every week, Thursday at 6:00 PM. And it's usually just, you know, 15-minute programs that are presented, you know, month to month, with different topics of interest to seniors. Currently, this month, we're touching on legal issues of concern for older people with Eileen Fitzgerald, who's an elder law attorney. Next month, we'll be doing some survey results that I'm going to touch upon here a little bit here in a few moments. August will be memory and the older adult, and a 15-minute program on that. And finally, in September, there'll be a program dealing with pain management and therapy programs. So, again, that's a 15-minute program, and it changes every month. A lot of elderly people tune into it and, you know, really like it on their cable TV. The Banner Newsletter is another thing we've been doing. Have many people seen this, perchance? First few months of this year, this went out. I don't know if it's familiar to many of you. Okay. This is put out yearly, all right, and it's sent to everybody, you know, every elderly person that we can get our names on a list, five, 6,000 people throughout the township. Contains a lot of very useful information on stuff that the township's doing and programs that are available and so forth. We can distribute copies here when I wrap up. And what we did this year in this was we did a survey of our area elderly people. This was it here, you can see it. And this posed 32 questions, along with providing space, too, for people to write in, you know, whatever might be in their mind. 32 questions is a pretty big survey, and we are really happy with the return rate. As I said, it went up to about roughly 5,000 households, we think. We got over 500 usable responses for this, which is really a good rate of return. So, people, and one of these we did as advisory committee members, too, was we went around and dropped them off at senior centers, we brought them to nursing homes, and, you know, places of worship and so forth, you know, to try and boost up our numbers. And I'll be hitting some of the highlights of that survey here, you know, in a couple more minutes with you. But, and this, we have not done this kind of thing since 1999, so it's a very good thing. You know, it'd been 13 years, so we're really pleased that we updated it. And there will be probably, before the year is out, another briefer issue of the Banner News coming out that's going to highlight the survey results specifically. We also have an information and referral program. That's housed at the township offices. Phone number is there on your sheet of the contact numbers. And with that number, a lot of times, you actually get a live human being that you can talk to, or if you don't get the human being, that person will get back to you, usually within 24 hours. And that's just sort of a phone number to answer any questions that senior citizens may have about finding community resources they need. And we know that there's plenty out there, but a lot of folks don't know about it in terms of stuff that is available, you know, to help out seniors. And the information and referral program, you know, they'll help you complete applications for assistance programs, such as Circuit Breaker. They'll help people with the Real Estate Tax Deferral Program that's available for people 65 and up. And they'll help people, too, with things like living wills, powers of attorney, passport applications. You know, they won't actually do them, but they'll at least kind of point people to where they can get help for those kind of things. SALT, S-A-L-T, is an acronym. Stands for Seniors and Lawmen Together. And this year, we've reinstituted that program, and it kind of lay fallow for the last couple of years. We've gotten that going again, and with that, we involve all of our fire chiefs and all of our police chiefs, working collaboratively with this body that's called SALT, in order to arrive at different programs and initiatives that elderly people can, you know, avail themselves of. We meet monthly with that. We have a speakers bureau. We hand out file of life cards that people can utilize and so forth. We're close with the DuPage County Sheriff, among other things, too. Coast-to-coast prescription drug discount card, that's a relatively new program. It's not just for seniors, it's for really anybody in the township. Phone numbers are there and the contact information. That's an initiative that's just getting going. It's a nationwide program, actually, and people can get discounts of up to 40% on, you know, certain prescriptions, not necessarily everything, but certain prescriptions. So, that's there for people. And then there's other programs that we link to via DuPage County Senior Citizen Services. This is more where we link folks up. And again, the phone numbers are on your sheet. The Community Care Program provides Homemaker and Adult Day Services. Home-delivered meals are made available through DuPage Senior Citizens Council, and people can get help, too, with things like, you know, small home repairs as well. So, those last few things are more cases of, you know, not what we're directly involved with, but things that people can easily link to through us, and then hopefully can get that kind of help as well. Community Needs Survey, as I said, wanted to touch base a little more on that with some of the highlights from it. First of all, we had a very good representation from Westmont, I'm happy to tell you. We had a total of 54 responses from people here in town, so over 10% of the returns we got were from, you know, you folks, and we really appreciate that level of participation. I do have a sheet to hand out. At the end, people could kind of write comments, and we do have a summary of those, you know, what Westmont people had to say, you know, the 10 or 15 comments that people took some time to write about. Okay? So, again, the response rate from here was really good. Few things stood out, and several of them really fold right into that SALT program I told you about and the importance of that. There's still a lot of fears about safety amongst, you know, elderly people. Over 30% of people answering expressed some fear about going out after dark. Again, about 31% people said nighttime lighting in their neighborhoods could be better. They felt it was a little bit inadequate. About a third of the respondents were uncomfortable with solicitors at their door, and about a third, 32%, basically feared being the victim of a crime at some point. Now, those numbers, I happen to look back at 1999, they all went down a bit, at least. Back in 99, they were more near about 40%. But, you know, so at least there's a positive trend there, it looks like, over the years, but still, you know, one-third, if you think about it, is a pretty big chunk of elderly people who still, you know, have these kinds of concerns. The two crimes people worried about the most predictably were theft and burglary. Pretty high ratings for those two things especially. And obviously, there, there's room, again, for that interface with the SALT program, with the police and the fire departments. Familiarity with Services found some really glaring areas where, you know, there's stuff out there that folks just simply don't know about. This first figure, the DuPage County Sheriff has a guardian program, they call it, and that's where if an elderly person is on their own, or they've got a nearby relative, but they're not with them, you can register with the guardian program, and they will call a person once or twice a week, just to check in, see how, you know, see how they're doing, that kind of thing, just, you know, light touch. And then if they don't happen to make contact, you know, then they can send somebody by to just stop in and be sure, you know, everything's okay. Two-thirds of people among the 500 respondents didn't know about that program. That didn't make the DuPage County Sheriff very happy, because they do a lot to try and publicize this thing, but somehow, the word's just not getting out there. So, you know, that's a pretty big area that they're going to be working on, working, you know, with us on, in terms of trying to get out, you know, the idea of that program better and the availability of it. Nearly half of people, about 46%, didn't know about Sheriff's Neighborhood Watch Program either. And over 40% in both cases of all these respondents didn't know about police department home security checks. You know, practically all our communities, the police department will come by and do a free home security check for an elderly person, you know, or anyone else, frankly, but obviously mostly for the elderly, for, you know, home security. And the fire department likewise has a home fire safety check program. And again, over 40% of people responding here, and these were nearly all elderly people, 65 and over, didn't happen to know about that. Nearly 60% of people don't test their smoke alarms, which ought to do once a month. An overwhelming number of people don't have what's called a home preparedness kit. And those got very big right after 9/11. People went out and bought those kind of things so that two to three days, if there was some sort of emergency, they'd be okay, they'd have the kind of things in their house that you need in case there was some sort of emergency or a bad storm, power outages, whatever. Obviously, that's kind of gone away, and now it's up at 86% of people who either didn't know what it was or don't have it. One of these is going to be doing this fall with the SALT council, is just basically putting together what a home security, what a home preparedness kit is, and trying to get that out at community fairs and so forth, and begin to get in people's minds just a little better idea of, you know, what's in it, where can I get this, these type of materials, et cetera, just to try and, you know, bring that along a little bit better. And finally, nearly half of people, 48%, did not have a list of emergency contacts and medical information handy in their house in case the first responder does show up and there's a problem. This is a file of life card, right here, that we give out at the township office, it costs you a dollar, or maybe you get it free. But anyway, this is a file of life card, and nearly half of folks don't have any such thing in their houses. And for a policeman or a fireman responding to an emergency, it can obviously be something that can really help out, you know, in a pinch to have this, so that right away, they might have a better idea of what might be going on, if this is a situation they're going to deal with. So, again, with that, it's not the kind of level of knowledge and participation that we'd like to see. And so, all those kinds of things are the, you know, the types of things we're going to be working on in the future going forward. Be happy to answer any questions from anybody. Either you've understood this, or I've totally baffled you. Anyone?
Any big issue that stood out from the last one, besides what you said? I mean, any?
No, I think the pattern seemed to be pretty consistent. The biggest fears are about safety and security, you know, and that was true as well back in 1999. You know, there was, people were less concerned about crazy phone calls from telemarketers. That number went down appreciably, and it's probably caller ID, the 800 registry, where people can, you know, screen that stuff out, and people, I think, becoming a little more sophisticated about scams and that type of thing, and knowing how to deal with it. That was one number that really dropped. But the basic things about security and so forth remain high, I would say, you know, from one survey to the next.
What's a better way to get the word out? Because like the file of life, my mom lives at a senior center, and they're required to have it on top of their refrigerator. And being at a senior center, they enforce it. You know, if somebody doesn't have it, they get a prod. But how can we get the word out, since that is such, the numbers are high about critical things that people, elderly people, really should know about?
Right.
So, what can we do to help you do that?
I think it's, you know, it's good to be appearing here tonight, and this is a televised meeting, you know, and hopefully the citizens you've got watching this pick up on it.
Well, I think, I know a lot of people watch our committee of the whole, because this is usually just voting. So, I think we should mention it at our next committee of the whole, that they go on, you know, wherever they watch this through Pod System or YouTube.
Right.
To watch your presentation.
Yeah.
Because a lot of times, people just don't watch this one, because there's usually not as much information or as lively.
Right.
As the committee of the whole.
Right. And I would imagine Vintage Times probably deals with it once a year, do they, Frank, in the monthly program?
They do it at least once a year.
Yeah. Yeah. And so, that's another way I, you know, things like this are another way. But, I mean, what you're talking about really is, it is the challenge.
Well, I think the other thing is our public information. We've started putting valuable information in with electric bills. It's right on the bill as a little newsletter blurb, so if we can put something about, you know, you need to look for these things that can help you and valuable services.
Right.
Put that on there, so.
Everybody looks at their water bill.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Oh, I said electric bill, it's water bill.
Yeah. One of these is what we're going to be looking to do, too, I think, you know, we've got another arm of our little organization, that's a publicity committee. And they are looking to probably try and interface more with things like the patch that now a lot more people are getting into looking at for their community and getting articles to them, because, you know, it's good to have this stuff in the newspapers, but, you know, the print media is kind of declining a bit, and things like patch, albeit it's on your computer, but, you know, that's getting, getting to be a good way to get the word out, too. So, and it's stuff like that that, you know, our publicity committee is going to be looking at and working on an ongoing basis. We're developing, too, a little pamphlet. Bill, do you remember the name of the little pamphlet we're doing, the idea we got from another community?
Pocket.
Thank you. Pocket Pal. Pocket Pal is another thing we're formulating, which is just a little index-y kind of thing that opens up like this, and you can list in it a lot of community resources. We're going to be producing one of those next few months. We're actually going to be trying to get that out in the fall to elderly people that precinct committee men encounter. And we got, both the Republicans and the Democrats have agreed to just hand that stuff out. It's obviously nonpartisan, you know, but it's another thing we're going to try and do, targeting particularly, you know, elderly people, if we've got enough copies done by then, you know, to get it out that way, and it lists a lot of the resources here.
Yeah, because we get a lot of people taking brochures from our train station chamber, especially if it's a pocket pal, and it's like the miniature train schedule.
Mm-hmm.
We can put some of those in the train station, because we get a lot of people in off-hours that are elderly and disabled.
Right.
And we could pass some of those out.
Yep.
Downstairs, we could.
Yeah, the banners.
With our information.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's too late, but we could possibly check with Larry to see if there's a chance they could set up a quick booth at the Taste, where a lot of seniors will be, and have just a little senior booth that'll give out a whole caboodle full of information and let them know where to go for help.
Thank you.
Larry might be able to help them on that.
We're going to have our old township booth, but we're doing it very thing.
Okay, at the Taste?
Good.
Fantastic. That's going to be a good way to do it.
Just maybe for something for the future, but do you have a Facebook site?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a Facebook page as a township?
No.
No. Just thinking that even though middle-aged people, and they may not be ready for this, but it's future seniors, and they may, at least if you start getting the word out early, that there is programs available when they reach that. Oh, yeah, I remember that. Seen it for a long time.
Yeah.
So.
We have, we have to say, we have to say that before we do Facebook.
Okay.
Facebook.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
You know, if you have something...
You know, if you have something specific, or what, you might go out and do something. The county's always there to help. Maybe suggesting something, and then all of a sudden, say, oh my God, you didn't think of it. We'd love to have participation. That's the big thing, trying to get information.
I've got a trusty website, I got a trusty page out there. I'd be happy to take it on my Facebook page and put it out there. Guys can get me the information?
Okay.
Just up in the right direction, and more of us, I know Trustee Nero's got one, and so.
Happy to put it on.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you for all the information.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you very much, and again, too, I know this is being broadcast, our thanks to the over 50 people, you know, here in this community who filled out that survey and took the time with it. It's greatly appreciated. We didn't get that kind of response from everybody, so, very good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. There'd be one more thing I'd like to say, I think the mayor would go along with this. Everyone, please remember Thursday night is Cruisin' Car/ Squad Car Night in Westmont. Going to have all types of squads from different towns and that. McGruff the Crime Dog is going to be there for about an hour. Lights and Sirens Parade at 9:00. And there's going to be games, crafts, freebies, so, you know, bring your camera. And any drawings benefit the Special Olympics of Illinois. Entertainment that night's going to be Deep Grooves and the Blues Brothers. So everyone, please join us at 6:00 on Thursday night for that. And from 4 until 9, we have the French Market, which is now part of this also, so please come out and enjoy that. The only other thing that I have at this point is to request an executive session with personnel. And move on to the clerk.
The only thing I want to remind everyone to check on their neighbors in this heat, we're going to have heat, a lot of heat for next week, so if you have elderly neighbors, just check and make sure they're doing okay. That's all I have. Thanks.
Attorney, Mr. Zimmack?
Nothing to report tonight, thank you.
May I manage this, huh?
Just wanted to do a quick public announcement of the upcoming Relay for Life. It's going to be on June 22nd here at Ty Warner Park. I know that one of our trustees mentioned to me today that there are people out in the community that were soliciting and trying to get interest for that particular event, so I just wanted to mention that this evening. And then I, and I forgot to mention this to Mayor Broughton, but I'd like to add pending litigation to executive session. That's all I have.
Okay. Moving into unfinished business. Consent agenda, or to consider an ordinance creating a consent agenda section of the village board meeting agenda?
Motion to approve, Emory.
Second, Nero.
Any comments?
Yes. I had raised this issue, putting it back on the agenda, it's been kicked around time and again. And we've gone over people's concerns and board members' concerns, and the pros and cons. I certainly appreciate the trustees' positions that believe that even taking the rudimentary and most mundane matters and combining them into a consent agenda tend to go the way of reduce transparency when we are all pro, in increasing transparency, at least as far as this local government is concerned. However, I also still believe that the reasons that those of us who wanted a consent agenda are also very viable reasons. So my proposal is, is that before we go to a consent agenda system, that we give it a shot for six months. If we don't like it, we get complaints from residents saying, no, I want each individual item out. If we have board members pulling items out for separate consideration on a regular basis, it tells us that for this village, the consent system isn't working. If it goes smoothly and quickly, and all of the mundane and quick matters are consolidated, then it works for us, without taking into account what works for other local governments. So my proposal is, my motion to approve is based on a six-month trial run.
Would you like to go so far as say, make it a sunset? Six months, you've got to make a decision, do you want to extend it or not?
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. So we would start trying it right away? In six months, we evaluate it?
Well, in six months, it's going to expire. We will be forced to evaluate it and decide whether we keep going or let it, let it just die a natural death.
To comport with Robert's rules, let's make a motion as to the six-month sunset clause, and then have a vote on that motion. If that passes, or not, then we'll go back to the original motion as amended and have a separate vote on that. Does that make sense?
So we need a motion on the six-month trial with the sunset clause.
So moved, Emory.
Second, Nero.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Emory?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Clubino?
No.
Okay, we already have a first and a second on the original motion, correct?
Right.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Do we have any other comments, or is it over with at this point?
Any other comments? Sorry. Go ahead.
While I am still not really pleased with this form of agenda, with the going to a consent agenda, I am willing to work with the board and show that we're trying to strive to be a good board and work all together. And I would be in favor at this point of giving it the six-month trial. I like the part about the sunset clause on it right there, and we'll see how it goes from there. Willing to give it a try.
Yeah. Because at the end of six-
But I wouldn't want to go into it if we weren't going to do the sunset clause, and so.
I mean, you know, just try something a little bit different, but I mean, putting a sunset clause on it, as it will force us in six months to make a decision, either continue or it drops.
And we may, we may find out even sooner.
It's very possible.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Emory?
Yes.
Trustee Clubino?
No.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Moving on to new business. Independence Day celebration and special events request. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following request. A, an amplified sound permit request. B, special events traffic plan using various one-ways. C, street closures around Ty Warner Park from 6:00 a.m. to 10:30 p.m., or until public has dispersed after the fireworks presentation. Can we take these as a block? Yep.
Motion to approve as a block, Emory.
Second, Nero.
Comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Emory?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Clubino?
Yes.
Number four, Independence Day celebration and special event liquor license fee waiver request. Board to consider an ordinance waiving the special events liquor license fee for Westmont Park District for a 2012 4th of July celebration to be held at Ty Warner Park.
Motion to approve, Emory.
Second, Scott.
There was a question that came up Thursday night dealing with this, that Emory had, oh, Emory had, dealing with the-
The comment was, the documentation in there did not actually support the, provide insurance for the actual event. It provided insurance for the Health Corps and for the-
Veterans Park.
Yeah.
It was covered, but Ty Warner Park was not covered in the disclaimer.
That would have been secondary insurance to the insurance that was being provided by the Lions Club.
Okay, well, I'm going to leave that in the hands of the police department. The Lions Club is the, although it's on Park District property, the Lions Club is purchasing and selling the alcohol. So they're the ones we would look to for proper dram shop insurance, I would assume. And I think that's what we've always done in the past. So as long as we have insurance from Lions, we're okay.
I'm not sure that we've ever had secondary coverage.
No, I mean, and it was, it was a question that just came up.
It was a good question, I mean, it was in there and it didn't make sense.
Yeah.
Same thing with the Taste. Although it's on public property, it's the Lions Club that's going to be providing the dram shop insurance for that. And to the extent the village would get sued and would have an umbrella policy that would cover something like that, we're not actually selling and serving the liquor, it takes place on our property. Park District has insurance to cover events, accidents, et cetera, on their property, but they will not be selling the liquor.
Yeah, I think it was because of a, one of the information that was sent in, one side talked about the Lions, and the other side gave the other information for the people who don't have, that's where she brought it up at.
Have a connection.
Yeah, there was a connection on him, and that's why she was, Emory brought it up, so.
Okay.
Stupid young lady.
Whatever.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Clubino?
Yes.
Trustee Emory?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Five, resolution for improvement by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code. Board to consider an IDOT resolution for the village's 2012 MFT resurfacing project, MFT number 12-00103-00-RS. Motion, please?
Motion to approve, Scott.
Second, Emory.
Questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Clubino?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Emory?
Yes.
Number six, administrative changes to Chapter 18 of the municipal code. Board to consider an ordinance approving amendments to the municipal code, Chapter 18, Buildings and Building Regulations.
Motion to approve, Scott.
Second, Emory.
On question? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Clubino?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Emory?
Yes.
Number seven, Westmont Park District Intergovernmental Agreement. Board to consider an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Westmont Park District for landscaping maintenance of village properties. Motion?
Motion to approve, Scott.
Second, Emory.
Questions?
Just a quick comment. The Park District, after this agreement was worked out, asked for a slight change in the timing of payment. The payment amount would remain the same. Originally, the payments were scheduled on August 1st, November 1st, and then into the next year on February 1st. They would like those three payments all made by December 31st of each year, with the last payment coming as scheduled in April. And I know Ron and Steve May looked at that and saw no problem with it, it's just a, again, the amount's not changing, a slight acceleration as to the payment schedule.
It's my understanding that's how they approved the agreement.
That's how the Park District Board did.
On Thursday.
So.
Keeps it in line with what they've already approved, so.
Yeah.
We have no problem with it.
If everyone's okay, the agreement will reflect that revised payment schedule?
True. If we must.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Emory?
Yes.
Trustee Clubino?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Purchase orders.
Motion to approve purchase orders for a block for $666,561.83, with $558,000 going to the village of Downers Grove for dispatch portions.
Second, Emory.
Any questions on purchase orders? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Emory?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Clubino?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else before we adjourn into executive session for personnel and potential litigation?
Actually, it's existing litigation.
Existing litigation?
Sorry.
I'll take a motion on existing litigation and personnel. Executive session.
So move, Scott.
Second, Emory.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Clubino?
Yes.
Trustee Emory?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Yes.